Meeting order. You want to do roll call? Commissioner Cardenas.
President.
Commissioner Sue.
President.
Commissioner Douglas.
Here.
Vice Chair Patrick is absent, and Chair Chelf.
Here.
Thank you. Would you like the latest in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Brian, place your right hand over your heart, ready. Begin.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, approved order of the agenda, I will approve that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Blue folder items, do we have any?
None.
Yeah, makes it easy. Public comments on non-agenda items, I see none. Consent calendar, 7A, approve affidavit of posting for the planning commission, regular meeting, September 16th, 2025. And 7B, approve the minutes for the August 19th, 2025, planning commission meeting. I move to approve both 7A and 7B.
I.
Oh, thank you. Second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Sorry, got ahead of myself. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, public hearings on items continued from previous meeting, this is zoning case number 25-033, this is for One Hackamore Road. Stephanie, you want to give us an overview?
Yes, of course, I'm happy to provide an overview of the project. Good evening. Honorable planning commissioners, I'm here to present zoning case number 25-033, and this is for the property located at One Hackamore Road. It's for variance, it's for site plan review, conditional use permit, and variance. This project has been continued from the August 19th and July 24th, planning commission A little bit of site background, the zone is RAS 1, the net lot area, it's a smaller lot, is 1.08 acres, which is 40,070 square feet. The existing residence was built in 1949. The lot is developed with a 2,785 square foot main house, 661 square foot garage, 808 square foot swimming pool, 48 square foot pool equipment, 42 square foot shed, outdoor kitchen, and there is currently an existing 915 square foot corral. This is the location, this is our zoning map right here, this green, this green is the RAS 1 zone. So, it's this, like I said, this project has been continued. It was first introduced at the July 24th planning commission meeting. There were some issues that were presented to the planning commission, there were some view obstructions to the neighbors that were due to the height and the placement of the stable, so the applicants decided to redesign the project, and it was continued over to the next meeting. It was also presented up at the public hearing as well, too. And at the public hearing, on July 24th, the planning commission recommended that staff work with the applicants to revise the plans, and it was continued at the August 19th planning commission meeting, that was the second meeting. And at that second meeting, the applicants redesigned the project, they did move the barn nine feet back from the existing footprint location. And at the first field trip meeting, this was the second field trip meeting, staff presented an overview of the project, and the main discussion was actually moving the stable into the rear setback. Also, the commissioner's staff and all the attendees walked over to two of the properties on the street, walked over to Four Hackamore and also Six Hackamore Road, to get a firsthand look at, you know, the view obstructions of the stable. Over at Four Hackamore, there were no view obstructions, but over at Six Hackamore Road, there was a view obstruction. It was visible, clearly visible from the living room, that looking out into the ocean, there was a view obstruction. So, we continued the meeting at the public hearing that evening. We present, staff presented a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, and it was discussed to move the stable into the rear setback. The planning commissioners unanimously voted to continue the, this meeting to the next hearing, which is tonight. And the project did not need to be restaked or re-silhouetted, so there was no field trip this morning. The planning commissioners directed staff to work with the applicants, and the applicants did move the stable out of the front setback and into the rear setback, to address the view obstruction issues. And today is September 16th, and this evening, the applicants have revised the plans to address all of the view obstructions. Here's an aerial photograph, this is One Hackamore. You can see number one right here, that's why the one is clear, it was Eastfield Drive, so it's on the corner, it's a corner lot, and then it's accessible from Hackamore Road. So, come down the street here, there's the cul-de-sac, there's an existing dirt pathway here that leads down to this corral, there's an existing 930 square foot corral. So this area right here is the proposed location for the new stable. Here's a summary of some of the approvals that are needed. There's a site plan review which is required for the stable, new stable is 19 feet, so in red is what is actually going to be, is part of this proposal, the new stable, 19, 19 feet height, max height, not, the grading, non-exempt grading, site plan review is required for non-exempt grading, grading quantities increased, they were originally 604 cubic yards, but now they're 1,400, 1,400 cubic yards, cut and fill, all will be balanced on site. Retaining walls have stayed the same, the maximum five feet height for retaining walls, the building pad expansion, to even out and level out the building pad, it will be expanded by 3,172 square feet, and the other improvements. They're also requesting conditional use permits, a conditional use permit is required when there's a stable that is more than 200 square feet. So the stable height, again, is 19 feet, and the proposed new, for proposal number three, the total square footage is 1,859 square feet. And there's a variance for the maximum 40% disturbed area. So, rendering of the stable, this is the east elevation, like I said, there's no changes since the last proposal, still 1,859 square feet, and the max height is 19 feet, at the Here is a breakdown of all three of the proposals. This was the first proposal, so originally, the stable was 2,093 square feet. Second proposal, the stable square footage decreased by 234 square feet, 1,859 square feet is what is being proposed as well today. There's the building pad, they did lower the building pad last time by two feet, they also lowered the building pad additionally another two feet, which brings it down to a total of four feet, which has been lowered from the original grade. Stable footprint, it's basically the same, but it's been moved back. So, the stable footprint, they did initially move it back nine feet, and with this proposal, they moved it back 15 feet, which is a total of 24 feet, which they've moved back from the first proposal. Also, the height, it's been lowered by one feet, one foot, so now it's 19 feet. Also, grading has increased, some more grading, because they had to push the stable back and lower the stable pad, which has increased the grading quantities. They've decided to go back with the original stable location, there's an existing driveway, so it, they're just going to use that same driveway for stable access. There were some changes for the front setbacks, initially, it was a 30-foot setback, but staff did some research in the code, and it's actually 50, a 50-foot front yard setback for any accessory structures. So, the second proposal, they had moved the, it was actually in the front setback, but it's still in the same location, it was just the setback had changed for the residents and for the accessory structures. It's actually, like I said, a 50-foot setback for accessory structures. At the last meeting, it was discussed that the stable be relocated, so it's been moved out of the 50-foot setback, and it is now encroaching into the rear setback, within the 25-foot rear setback. These were some of the project concerns, we already discussed the first three at the previous meeting. This was also part of the last meeting here, that this email, we did receive an email from Bert Balk, he was a resident over at Six Hackamore Road, he had concerns about the stable view obstructions from his front living room. He provided a photo of the stable, it's actually attached in the planning commission packets. So, the applicants had moved the structures by nine feet, but at that, we had actually walked over to, on the field trip to his house and looked at the, at the view obstruction. So, according to Bert, he recommended that the stable be moved further into the rear setback, and also on August 19th, it's, there's an email from Greg Noel, he's the resident over at Eight Hackamore Road, he was in support of moving the stable into the rear setback. I'm just bringing up this picture again, this was included in the email, this is from Bert Balk at Six Hackamore Road. As you can see, here's the silhouette of this stable from his living room, so that's across, you know, you could look, looking out from his living room, you can see the silhouette, which does block the ocean view. He kind of made this dark area, so you can kind of see what is being obstructed from this window, and, so what the applicants did is they did move the stable an additional 15 feet back. So this is one, it was silhouetted at nine feet, and now it's been silhouetted at a total of additionally 15 feet. Here is the 50-foot front setback. This was the old footprint of the stable, and this in blue right here, this is the stable that's been moved back. So it's been moved back 15 feet, it's out of the front setback, and it does encroach into the 50-foot rear setback right here. The corral is remaining in the rear setback as well. So, they shifted the stable, first it was nine feet, and then additionally, another 15 feet, now it's out of the front setback, which does not require variance, and then this blue footprint right here is the new footprint of the proposed stable. This is the 50-foot rear setback, and this is the bridle trail. This is a closer view. This is the red, here is the previous footprint, 15-foot back, this, this is supposed to be blue, this is the new footprint, and then this line here is where the 50-foot setback This is a bridle trail, so it's a 25-foot bridle trail and the rear setback, because it's actually, you know, 50 feet, so here would be additional 50 feet, does encroach into the 25-foot setback. So here's the corral, 550 square foot corral, and then the new footprint of the stable. The Rolling Hills Municipal Code, the requirements for stables that do require conditional use permit over, that are 200 square feet or more, states right here, the stable structure shall not be permitted in the front yard, shall not be located less than 25 feet from the side property line, which it's well away from the side property line in the RAS 1 zone, and then no less than 35 feet from the side property line, that doesn't apply to us, but here, no less than 25 feet from the side roadway easement, and here, from the rear property line. So, it is less than 25 feet from the rear property line, so it can actually encroach into the 50-foot setback by 25 feet, and that's what the code states here. I don't think we need that slide right there, or this one. Stable access, it's kind of flipped around this time, last time, we introduced this access, but they're staying with the stable access here, so this is an existing dirt area, and this is where the stable access is. Instead of shifting it over to a new location, they're going to use the existing stable access location. This project is categorically exempt, Section 1503, which is Class 3 for new construction of single-family residents and accessory structures. So our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, provide any direction to staff and the applicants, and a resolution has been included for the planning commission's approval. And if you have any questions, the architect, as well as the property owners, the applicants, are all here to answer any questions. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, so at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to the public, we'll give everybody an opportunity to speak if wants to, you need to come up and you need to state your name, so we can get it on the record. Who would like to start? You don't have to.
All right.
Okay. Nobody? Okay, I'm going to close that then, and we'll talk about it amongst ourselves. Sean, would you like to start?
Yes, I appreciate the owners making the requested adjustments based on the neighbors' feedback at the first and second meetings, and I think it remains a great project, and is satisfied, I don't think everyone's entirely happy with, with the, the outcome, but I do think it's, they went to great lengths to satisfy the concern to their, their neighbors, and I think the project is as great as it stands now.
Yeah, I got to commend the homeowners for being so collaborative, I'm happy with how they've managed to find a solution that mostly makes everyone satisfied.
Ditto.
Okay, I really don't have much to add, other than, yes, you guys bent over backwards to try to accommodate your neighbors, not sure I would have done it, but I applaud you for doing it. So, you want to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve, it's written as resolution number 2025-084, zoning case number 25-033, as written.
I'll second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much, thank you for all your efforts in working with the neighbors.
Thanks for all your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, excluded consent counter items, none, the next one is public hearings, items continuing from previous, oh, I'm sorry. We're moving on to public hearings, this is zoning case number 25-081, and this is for Five Ringbit Road. Would you like to give us an overview?
Sorry, sorry, you have to witness this. And then, over here. Good evening, honorable chair members of the commission, the application, the next application is for a public hearing for Five Ringbit Road West, zoning case 25-081, two variance requests. Little background, it is RAS 1 as well, one acre lot requirement, the net lot area is 1.10 acres or 48,100 square feet. The existing residence, 3,600 square feet with an attached 760 square foot garage, was built in 1961, and it was under zoning case number 11, they were granted a variance, which I'll show you on the site plan. They are allowed, in our code, for a reduced setback, the front yard setback is 50 feet, 30-foot for smaller lots, irregular lots are an allowance in the code, they needed a variance to build the house to go into the 30-foot reduced requirement by five feet. So to reiterate what we saw on, at the field trip this morning, it is an irregular shaped lot, we saw that, there is only one pad, there's only one building pad, and it's where the house and garage stand, and there's, due to the steep terrain in the backyard, we saw that, Klondike Canyon is in the backyard. And finally, there's a cul-de-sac, cutting into, the bulb of the cul-de-sac cuts into the front of the property as well, hence, they were granted a variance back in early days, zoning case 11 was probably one of the original zoning cases of incorporation. Anyway, granted a variance for the house. Before you tonight, we have two variance requests, they simply want a construction to allow a pergola in the 50-foot setback for accessory structures. In our zoning code, any accessory structure, like an attached trellis, a detached trellis, do require to be outside of the 50-foot setback, although the house is in the 30-foot setback. So they are requesting a variance to allow for construction of this pergola, 1,000 square feet in the front yard. They also request, due to the steep terrain in the rear of the property, to waive the stable and corral, set aside area of 1,000 square feet, that is a requirement when anyone ever does construction on a property, they do need to have a set aside area, this property is requesting a waiver. Here's the property location on the zoning map, it's in the RAS 1 zone, a Google map, Ringbit Road and Southfield, just south of, Southfield, if you will, the cul-de-sac right here, property is right here, Klondike Canyon is right in the backyard, and the house basically sits on the front building pad. This is the site plan, irregular shaped lot, it's not perfectly rectangular, and so basically, Klondike Canyon sits back here, making this portion of the property unbuildable, cul-de-sac right here, the, the front yard, the rear, rear setback on your plan is right here, fif, this is the, actually, this is the 50-foot set, well, actually, that's a 30-foot setback. But, the, sorry about that, the 50-foot setback is, is right here at these two pergolas, the 50-foot setback right here, I think I cut off the 50-foot line when I was cropping this earlier, sorry about that, but the 50-foot line is technically right here. So if they were to build at the 50-foot, they would basically get no shade from this proposed pergola area. The house, the 30, this is actually 25 feet back, so the 30-foot setback is right here, the 30-foot setback, it's right there. House was built in there per the variance, in order to do this pergola, which, it's on the west side of the property, and it provides the most shade for the afternoon sun, that's what they're requesting a variance. This is an existing photo, photo's worth 1,000 words of where we were standing this morning, they're using shade umbrellas right now for shade, but they would like to propose a 1,000 square foot, this is in a, a computer-generated image of what the pergola will look like if approved. The poles that we saw today, this were mimics of the poles that will be installed on the pergola, there were one, two, three, four, five, six poles at the site, there will be six poles on the posts that we saw on the fence, and the fence will be just reutilized, I did talk to the applicant after the field trip, or rather, the architect, they will be reutilized, restr, reinforced as needed, and the pergola will be built atop. It is a louvered system, it is a metal louvered system, so the louvers will act like blinds, and they'll be shut, they'll be painted white, the posts will be painted white to match the house, the posts are made of wood, as well as the supporting structure around, but the louvers will be metal, because of the mechanical nature of them to close and open on, on remote. This is an example of a pergola that was built by the architect in another location, but you'll notice that these are louvered, matched, to match the house, this is. Today at the meeting, we, we, as a result of the public notice, 1,000 square foot notice, we had some neighbors come out, and there were concerns that were outside the scope of the project, just wanted to document those concerns, and reiterate that parking along Ringbit Road is enforced under Title 10 of our zoning code, and it's also enforced, regulated by the RHCA, who, they're privately, and privately, private streets are maintained by the RHCA. Also in Title 10, I did, I did the reading, if there are any concerns about parking, the deputy sheriff enforces the parking code, and there's a non-emergency number, just wanted to remind everyone, there's a non-emergency number for parking violations. A lot, several neighbors asked about the construction during the pergola, because the property also had a, an approval recently for redoing their driveway, so there was a little bit of construction debris that we saw. Construction vehicle parking, I relayed the concerns to the applicant that, please be mindful of your neighbors, keep, keep, you are allowed to have dumpsters in the street while you're doing construction, but he did say that the pergola is expected to take three to six months for construction once, if it's approved. Another concern outside the scope of the project is the railroad ties that we saw along the side of the property, not in the purview or scope of this project, but are they going to be replaced with pavers? I asked the applicant if he knew anything, he's here tonight, if you have any questions on that, and if he can answer that question, he said he did not know if they were going to be replaced or not.
Can you repeat that, what you said about the paver? Could not hear that at all.
We will open it up in a minute, we'll get it replaced, but.
What's the railroad ties?
And then, the next slide, this, and almost in conclusion, this is exempt from the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act under 15303 for new construction, the pergola is exempt from that. And so therefore, staff recommends you open the public hearing, take public testimony, close public hearing, discuss the proposed project, and if the commission sees fit, a draft resolution has been prepared for your approval, and can be modified as needed. Questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I am accused.
Oh, yes, you need to accuse yourself, so you can go.
Okay.
Out in the audience. Try not to get hurt. Any questions? Not for staff.
I have one, I don't know who it would be who answers this, I didn't catch, the wall is just going to be reinforced, so it's not going to be torn down.
Reused, repurposed, reinforced as needed to construct, to build the pergola, yes.
And it will not encroach any farther out than it already does. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to open it up to the public, if you want to speak, please come up and state your name, we'll give everyone a chance to speak.
Good evening, my name is Clarice Shoemaker, One Ringbit Road West. This morning at the field trip, a mention was made that somebody had sent in email comments about parking, do you remember that?
I do remember that, it wasn't an email, we had a phone call discussion, and we requested that the phone call person, if they have any concerns, to put it in writing, either in an email that we put in proof folders, or in a handwritten letter. We did not receive anything at the time, at the time of this meeting.
I want to caution you, though, we're not here to talk about parking, we can address parking issues, you can take it up with Rolling Hills Association, they're in charge of that, there's no overnight parking, there are rules and regulations about construction parking, so I caution you, I don't want to go off on tangents about things that aren't in the purview of what we're here to discuss.
I understand, but parking is part of this, so I'm going to talk about it. First of all, I'd like to know why a variance is included, this morning, the owners said that they did not request the variance, the stable and the corral variance, and some...
Which variance are you talking about?
The stable and the corral variance.
Okay, so I explained to you this morning, whenever you come to the city and you have a new project, it is mandatory that you put aside an area for a corral and a barn.
Mm-hmm.
Required. If you do not want to do that, then you have to get a variance to not have to do it, that's what they are asking for. So per our code, you have to have a set aside, whether you're going to build it or not, you have to have a set aside, so that's why we're discussing it.
Again, they did not request it, so we...
It doesn't matter whether they requested it, anytime you come to the city and you want to build something, you want to do something different, it is required that they have to put a set aside on their plan.
I think, I think the set aside issue here is extremely dangerous, because you never know what's going to happen to this property in the future, we don't know what's happening to codes in the, in the, coming up, if somebody says, I don't have to build a barn, I don't have to build a corral, I don't have to set the property aside, but you... don't have to set the property aside, but you know, I think I'm going to build an ADU now," that does affect parking in a cul-de-sac where parking is a huge issue. So that's the first thing. Let me, I want to go, they are requesting a permit for construction, right? It's a construction permit that's being requested, right?
Permit to build a pergola.
This is a variance. They will go through the building and safety plan check process to get a...
Okay, so, but the building, the, the encroachment into the easement is just the overhang. Chair Chelf.
Okay. This isn't for debate. Just make your point and then, and then we will address.
I'm just trying to make sure that there is no construction because we were told different things this morning. We were told that there were going to be footings for the, the posts going down, and somebody specifically said, "Are they going to move the wall further into the easement?" We were told they are not moving the wall further into the easement, but we were told the wall is coming down, but it's going to be rebuilt in the same area.
So the architect will come up and he can answer some of these questions.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because when I looked at the drawing or the, the picture or something, the posts to support the pergola are set on the existing wall. So the construction is the pergola inside, which is within the limits. The easement into the, the thing into the easement is the overhang. That's what we're talking about.
This is comments section, so make your comments and then...
I just want to verify that that...
You're not, you're not asking questions.
Okay.
Make your comments.
Okay.
And may or may not address them.
I think you, there was a comment made about the railroad tie steps and that's the thing, we could not hear what was said about, the question about, the presentation about whether the railroad tie steps will be replaced with pavers.
We'll wait until after the comments and we'll address them, Chair.
Okay. My concern about that is, I call that the steps to nowhere. When we did the site plan, somebody went down the steps, somebody from the city, I can't remember who I was following. I went down them, they're, I mean, the railroad ties are a little unsteady for me. And then we reached a certain point where somebody says, "Just stop, it's dangerous." I mean, there are steps going to nowhere. My concern is, if you live in the area like I do, the topography is, the Ringbit East cul-de-sac is the top of the hill, the Ringbit West cul-de-sac is the bottom of the hill. In a rainstorm, it all floods down. You can actually go into the intersection with Southfield when it's raining, you can see the water flooding through the intersection. When these steps are paved, I guess, isn't that a straight channel for water to shoot down into Klondike Canyon? So that's, that's a concern I have about the stability of the canyon and water. So that's one of the things I have. I think today, people did ask if there would be glare on the, on the panels. I think today we were told they're going to be silver. Somebody just said they're going to be white, so I'm raising the glare. Someone in the neighborhood asked me to make this request, so this is sort of, they have asked the homeowners to tone down their driveway lights, they're very bright and they are shining.
Again, that's what we're here to discuss.
I have a comment about the construction timeframe, three to six months. And this also is in the parking, the cul-de-sac is not usable. And I understand that they're going to take three to six months to do this construction if they get this permit. It, it's already been years that we can't use the cul-de-sac. Three to six months is just not acceptable. I've lived there for 25 years and all my neighbors, they're all improving their homes. Nobody dumpster stuff in the cul-de-sac. Everybody has it on their own property. I understand they have a, a, a property that has problems, but there is space in there that they can move their material in. Three to six months, that's just, that's just not acceptable. I mean, what if there's a fire? We can't get a fire truck in there. You can't get an ambulance in there. My dog got out the other day and I couldn't go down the cul-de-sac and turn around. So something, that, that timeframe is just not acceptable. Yeah. I just also wanted to say, can, can you go back to the proposed picture? There was a picture, can we do that?
Sure. Put it up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to say, that is, that's just not an accurate photo. I mean, there's a retaining wall there that doesn't exist. That's where the steps to nowhere go. And there's all this planting there, but that's actually, there's a driveway there.
The driveway's way back.
There's like...
Okay, again, focus your, the audience, I'll give you a chance to talk. If you want to speak, come up, get it on the record. I don't need comments.
I know, I know your job is tough and I know you don't like having the homeowners come and complain and all of that, but you know, I live there.
I don't know where you get off thinking that I don't listen to the homeowners, okay? I've been doing this for almost 15 years, okay? It is very important that you people come in and we get what, what your thoughts are on this. And that we're going to analyze it, so you attacking me doesn't do you any good. I'm sitting here listening to you. All I'm trying to do is keep you focused on what we're here to discuss, and you're going off on tangents.
I, I, I understand.
Make your statement and then we'll be done with it and we'll get the architect up here to answer your questions.
I think we should be civil and I'm just...
I'm trying. I don't think you're the one that's being civil.
I think we both need to be civil. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carol Maroney and I live at 17 Southfield. And the only comment, or the comment that I want to make is that, and with that picture up there really kind of says it all, that is a very small pad that they have, the house on, and their driveway and their garage and everything. And it is right next to the cul-de-sac. And unfortunately for them, I mean, I feel bad that they're such a small lot, but at the same time, this is Rolling Hills. And Rolling Hills has a three rail fences. I mean, if you look down the cul-de-sac, Joe Hummel's place has this beautiful corral with the, and then all of a sudden, you're at the end of the cul-de-sac and there is the house and everything that's there. And to me, that is just not what Rolling Hills is about because it's all right there, jammed at the end of the cul-de-sac. There's no openness feeling to it, to look at the property itself. And to add more to this pad, even though it is open at the bottom, to me, it's just, and I feel bad about them facing west, but I also face due west, and we have shades that we take up and down instead of building something further out to be more of a obstruction-type view. And the biggest, or another concern I have is aluminum louvers or this, or the, the metal louvers. I don't see how that's going to help with the sun at due west because it's not going to come below the wood line, correct? They're not going to come down. They're just going to go in and out like this is what they're going to do. And to me, it just, just to get that little bit of sun out of there, it's a real addition to the property to make it more, I hate to use the word cluttered, but more dense in how it looks. And I just don't feel like it's compatible to the, oh, and when you look at it, they've got this big, and again, I'm, I'm sure every iron, black iron gate that opens up into their, their driveway. And then they have another gate next to the, where it opens. It's just, that's not what Rolling Hills is about, all these gates and everything. It reminds me of Brentwood and Beverly Hills. This is Rolling Hills. So I feel bad that, you know, that I have to say I'm not happy with it, but I think it, it does not enhance the community and the way that our community looks. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
We're the designers for the projects, I was going to take questions or give, give...
You need to come up. You need to state your name.
I was sure I was timed. It'd be nice if you would address some of the comments that were made so we have a better sense.
I would be glad to. My name is Steve.
The comfort level of what you guys are doing.
Thank you. My name is Steve Hosa with Hosa Design Associates. We're in Palos Verdes in Malaga Cove. I've been there since 1981. This project is the second project we've done here in Rolling Hills for a pergola. We did one earlier, a couple of years ago, but it was on the backside of the property so we didn't have the setback issues. I apologize, there was a miscommunication on my behalf. I take responsibility for it. I should have been there this morning, I didn't know. I thought it was just the commissioners taking a, a walkthrough and I didn't know it was also part of, like, the early version of this so that there would be residents there with lots of questions and I wasn't there to answer. So let me kind of set the record straight on a, a number of things, if I can. I'll try and remember all of them that were just asked. In the photograph that you see, that is an accurate example and proportionate to what is going on with the pergola. The pergola posts are sitting on the existing wall and structural, our structural engineer, Palos Verdes Engineering, has determined that the retaining wall is sound as it is. There's nothing going to be reinforced or done to it. It's existing and in the drawings, which are not up there, there is basically, if you would call them a pilaster, vertical point about every six or seven feet around the radius of that area. And we've, we've designed it so that it sits directly on each of those existing raised portions of the retaining wall. The, this entire structure of the pergola is all wood. It's, it's heavy timber for fire retardant and so forth. We're using, and all of this, just a little background, all of this has been submitted and approved by the Architectural Committee at RHCA and we have a permit number and everything. We went through this, that the metal awning part is an insert, almost like putting a window in a framed opening. The pergola structure itself is, like I said, heavy timber. It's made up of six-by-10 main beams around the perimeter top and then six-by-six posts. The aluminum louvers are an insert into a wood frame, so you don't see the wood, you don't see anything but the louvers being metal and they're painted white. They're a satin white to match the stucco and that was one of the conditions of the Architectural Committee. As it shows in the photograph, everything is of the same color. There's no silver aluminum, which was one of the comments, it's, it's all painted. And the reason for these louvers, it's a system that we've used before and the nice part about it is it has sun control, it can be completely shut off so that you have shade direct, when the sun is directly overhead. And then it can open up to any degree in between. And when it is in its closed position, they have interlocking louvers which creates a watertight. This became, becomes, so if you did have an event or something happened and you wanted to be outside and it started raining, this stops the rain and it actually has gutters around the perimeter that go into the, the natural gutters of the house so that it feeds into those, so there's no erosion anywhere around the property. Trying to think of the other answers that came up. Little background, it's, it's 1,000 square feet total. The actual front one is only 638 square feet. The, there's 300, 336 feet on the backside, over on the barbecue side, it's 673 to be accurate. And let's see, what else? I can't remember if there was a couple other questions. I didn't want to get in, well, I might as well mention it now because you, you asked me about it, or Stephanie did. I don't know anything about wood steps on the backside or, that's not in this project or in this scope. I don't know if the owner has plans to change that or to modify that sometime, we're down the line, but that's nothing that's on the table for us and for this project. I think that's, if you have other questions, I think that's pretty much it.
Are the drawings accurately depicting the pergola extending beyond the wall?
Yes, we had a, as required, we had a survey engineer come out and we have a certi, that Stephanie has, we have a stamp certified from the survey engineer that the flag silhouette structure is absolutely accurate. So whatever you saw today, that is, because of, little background, I'm sorry that you don't have there because I, I did have the drawings in the package, there's, there's, maybe, can you go back to the site plan? It might be helpful. That, that's what I need. The drawing, yeah. Yeah, yeah, thanks. There you go. Okay. Do you see on the lower left side, basically, the existing wall is curved. The original proposal was to have the pergola structure follow the curve and because the architectural style of a house, being a early ranch style, California ranch style, it was deemed inappropriate to have a curved fascia to a, to a trellis or to a wood pergola and therefore, there is a stepped effect that occurs. Each one is a square box or rectangle box. And as they stack up, they're stacked, they're staggered to follow the curve, but still in that photograph, before the rendering photograph, it still shows it as a square area. What that does is, because of the nature of that, to get the post to sit on the existing retaining wall, which it needs to for support, you're going to have a post and then an offset to the next post that gives you kind of a, a step effect, is the best way to say it. So the entire pergola is beyond the new codes of the setback, that's where the variance comes in, but the, the existing, our proposal was, our, our position was that the house, built 1961, and the patio built at the same time, was approved and legally permitted at that time and we're staying within that framework, except for a couple, maybe two-foot extensions of those posts just to make the shape follow, not be, not be a rounded shape.
So, question for you. I, I am struggling with the pergola in the front. When you drive down the street, it, it really jumps out at you. Have you looked at maybe building more of that pergola in the back and less in the front?
The, the problem is, on the site plan, as you can see, the area facing the ocean and the entire ocean view, and we, we submitted a number of photographs in our variance that you may have, that's the entertainment area. That's, that's the point where everything happens for the house and for the owner, for entertaining, for her client, not clients, for her family and for gatherings. So the side around the corner has limited view, if any, and it's almost like having something, having your, your center entertainment area in your backyard, which people do, but this, this is, this is to take advantage of the, of the, the view. The, I'm sorry, I don't have all the photographs on, in the computer here to show you, but on our board, right now, the, there's another photo rendering that shows it from the driveway, which is more of the, of the cul-de-sac angle. I took this photograph and did the photo rendering, standing at the end, out in the field. So you, the photo rendering, can you go back to that other photo rendering if you don't mind? That one right, yeah, right there, okay. That's taken like, out in the field across the street and when you see it from the actual cul-de-sac, which is back and the driveway is, is far to the right of that photograph, it has a different, it has a different approach when you're down there.
It jumps out at you, from, from a different angle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay.
You're done. Anyone else?
Susan Colita, Five Ringbit Road West, one of the owners. Regarding the railroad ties, those were repurposed from the back steps. They are not stairs. They are lying flat, going down to the stair, I mean, down to the gate on our property that accesses to the backyard, okay? And it's down in the canyon. We have no intention of putting any pavers on that, never have. We've repurposed the pavers, as we said we would when we got the permit to do the front surface on the back stairs down in the, in our backyard. So I don't, not sure why that became an issue, but we have, we are not putting pavers there.
Thank you for clarifying. And I don't know why it became an issue either, but thank you.
I'm Susan Sleet, the other owner. Her comment about the, our front gate, part of why we've been under construction is we also did our driveway. And if you look at the permit that we received to do the new driveway and the new fence, it is going to be, you know, white colored and we're, we're replacing any of the dark wrought iron, which I know doesn't have anything to do with this whole variance and setback. But the idea is we have an existing footprint... variance and setback. But the idea is we have an existing footprint that we just would like a shade structure. When you look at the other picture with all the umbrellas, which I think is, you know, not real pretty, you know, those umbrellas, they tear, they fall. We just are trying to get a little shade protection on an existing structure, existing retaining walls. We're not expanding the footprint of anything. We're just trying to make the area that's all windows. I mean, would I have built the house, you know, exactly in that spot, but we bought a house that, you know, was built in 1961. It's lovely. And we just want to be able to have a little shade on our existing footprint. So we're not trying to expand or get in the way of anything. We just want to make it more usable and livable.
The problem you've got is when the house was originally built, it already encroached into it and now you're coming back and asking to encroach farther into it.
No, we won't be encroaching any farther. It's on the existing, well, we went to the architectural committee four or five times and this is what they got us to design. My first choice was to follow the roundness of what the patio is that was approved in 1961. The architectural committee was very clear that they wanted it in square sections and so we have bent over backwards and came up with this plan to satisfy the architectural committee.
And they look at design, we look at mass.
Right.
So two different eyes on.
I mean, my understanding is, you know, we're completely on the existing footprint and pad, that we're not adding a square footage.
You'd be asking for a variance if you were, so.
Well, the variance is, the house is already there, so we're matching the footprint of the current variance.
Yeah, you're approaching into the 50-foot setback. That's why you're asking for a variance.
Because the house is already there, correct? The patio is already there. It's not adding into it, it's adding on, you're right. The variance that happened in the 60s. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Deborah Toll, Three Packs, that'll move west. So we have a deck. So you might be seeing us at some point. And one thing that hits you when you walk out on our deck is the sun. And so it's part of our house and we want to enjoy the deck, but when that sun hits, you want to go inside. And so at some point, we're going to probably approach this group and we're going to want a pergola. And the way that they design pergolas, we need to probably get this gentleman's card, is it's much better than the old pergolas. And it's, you know, the way that the slatted roofs, you know, occur and all of that, and if you can incorporate more of a natural essence to it, you know, it's much better. And so it's, you want to maximize the use of your property, so if you were able to put a pergola out there, well, then that would allow you to do that. And so I actually applaud the innovation, you know, to try and maximize the greater use, you know, of a part of the property. And I'm somebody that's the cheerleader for all neighbors and enjoy them coming together to try and figure it out so that it's a win-win, you know, for everybody. So there's peace in the neighborhood. And so I hope that everybody can come together and make it work.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, so I'm going to close the public portion and we will talk amongst ourselves.
Okay. I definitely, to the last resident's comments, I definitely get the need and use for the pergola typically in the backyard, in the front yard. And I also understand the architecture committee's design idea in terms of the fact that it's extending beyond the current patio. That to me is more of a technicality that it's going beyond the patio. When the house was first built, if they had asked to put a roof that extended to the edge of the patio area, I'm confident it would have been rejected. And so, you know, seeing something in the front yard as you're coming down the street that is effectively a roof, right? It is a pergola. It's an ancillary structure, but it's effectively a roof. To me, that's a large mass, especially with, I think it was six by 10 beams, et cetera. That to me is just significant. And if there's a way to reduce that coverage area size, something to bring it back, I think it would be more amenable to the neighbors to absorb. Again, I get that shade is nice, but in the front yard with what I view ostensibly as a roof, is a, it's a tough thing to take on and approve on the street.
Can I say something else? It's not a front yard.
No, it's been closed. We've heard it.
So I agree with Sean. Also, like, the house is 3662 and they want to build a thousand large addition to what is existing, right? And I'm sorry, can I ask a dumb question? Like, if it's shade that you're looking for, what is wrong with like the retractable roofs?
There's a lot of different ways you can get shade.
Right. Yes, that's right. Because I had a west-facing house as well, so I have a lot of sympathy for the, being buried by the sun from four to seven, but then we installed a really pretty, quite high-end retractable roof and, you know, it goes away and then it comes back and it's not a permanent structure, so to speak. I don't know, like, seems like there might be another way around this that is not so contentious.
Okay, thank you. First off, and I don't know that it matters, but for the stable and the corral, I have no problem granting a property like this a variance because you're not, it's not horse property. You're never going to have a horse property. There's concern that if we do this, it's a slippery slope and that you could put an ADU down there. For you to put an ADU down there, you would need the pad. You would have to grade a pad. It would never get through this body, so there's no way an ADU is going to go down there. So you're pretty safe that nobody is going to put an ADU. You've got to have access to an ADU. You've got to have the pad to put it on. There is only one pad for this site. So I don't, I don't have a problem for granting a variance for this. I'm one of three right now, but I do, and I brought it up earlier, my concern is, and I, after the field trip this morning, I drove back down and looked at the site, and as you're coming down the street, the corner of that pergola jumps out at you. And, you know, unfortunately, you guys are a very challenging lot. And we try to take that into consideration when we're looking at granting variances and all of that. The problem is when the house was originally built and you guys didn't build it, but it was built on a small lot and they took advantage of as much of the lot as they possibly could. There is a 50-foot front yard setback and you guys with the pergola are coming into that and going into that 50 feet. And because it's a cul-de-sac, because it's going down and that's up on a hill and the cul-de-sac swings wide, the pergola jumps out at you. So that's why I had said, you know, could you do more of it on the back? Can you pull up the picture of the, no, the plot map? Yeah. So this is the part of it that gives me heartburn. Is this part in here? This kind of goes away. If you've got this, it's not even an issue, no need to discuss it. But it's this, because when you come down, this corner jumps out at you. And I don't know, there's nothing you can do to fix that, but, you know, it is virtually on the street. So, you know, I, there's got to be some sort of a redesign, try to massage this, to try to figure out a solution to do it. I would suggest you talk to your neighbors too and try to figure out, you know, what would appease them. And again, I'm one of three, but I think you kind of see the direction that it is going. So we can eat.
Can I even ask a question just now to help the process?
You aren't supposed to, but I'm going to throw something out because, I mean, here's what's going to happen, okay? We're either going to take a vote and it's going to go one way or the other, or we can hold it over till next month and you guys can try to massage it and work on it and see if we can come up with a better layout that works for everybody. So.
And I would add to it, as you were pointing out there, you know, it's basically in six sections. The first three sections closest to the street are the sections that are coming out and they kind of catch your eye. For me, if the applicant were to come back next pass with those three sections eliminated, to me, that would remove a lot of the concerns of the massing and the, you know, the perception that there's a roof over the patio and facing the street.
And you guys did not comment on the corral.
No, the corral, set aside, variance, that's a, to me, it's a non-issue because there's no chance that anybody would ever put horses down that canyon. And again, it wouldn't make sense to do anything down that canyon, so I have no issue with the variance for the set aside.
So can I open it up to ask, and as to which direction you'd like us to go? Okay, so I'm going to open it up very briefly. And please come up, whoever is going to answer this question. State, come up, state your name.
And I just wanted to point at the drawing that you were just at and just ask a quick question. Steve Hosa, Hosa Design Associates. The setback that is the original setback of 1961 shows the corner, the lowest corner of the house, as the line of the front setback and that's shown on that drawing and it was whatever feet it is. When we did our research, and I know this gets a little bit gray, but there was, I think it's 1724 or 1725, said that if a house is existing on the smaller lots in RSA1, it's deemed to be legal as it sits. In other words, you're not going to ask them to move the house. Common sense. What I'm asking, if I can get up, may I? This is, obviously, this is the road, this is the center line of this property line. Here is, right now, at this corner, the existing setback that is shown on all of the existing plans that were through by the city when this was built, was shown as the legal setback at the corner of this house. So if we came straight across, parallel with the property line and cut off this, you'd lose the front half of two of them, or we could take out. But the problem with this area is this is the fat part of it. This is where all of the entertainment, not entertainment, the seating is and the outdoor living is and the benefit of everyone else that has a front patio porch like that. Would that be a consideration?
Again, zoning changes, you have to follow the current zoning. It doesn't matter what it was when it originally was built. We're looking at it as today's standards, today's codes, and so.
No, I know it still requires a variance. I didn't mean that. I was just showing a line.
I understand. But again, I don't want to tell you, I can, you know, we've given you some guidance as to what we think is, I don't want to use the word offensive, but it's too much. The massing is too much, right? So this is what you do for a living. You're much better at it than we are.
Okay.
All we're trying to do is take all of the comments that we got this morning, all of the comments that we got from all of the neighbors, see I am listening, and we're trying to come up with a project that fits in and the massing works. So I don't know what that means.
Okay.
You're going to have to get out your eraser and try to figure it out. Understand the need for shade. I mean, I've got to believe that the sun that comes into that house in the evening is bad. So it's, you know, it's not our job to kill dreams. We want to try to work with you and we want to try to come up with a project that works, but at the same time, it's got to fit in with the harmony of the neighborhood. So you tell me what direction you want me to drive this right now. You want me to take the vote or do you want to hold it over to, till next meeting?
Hold over. Hold over and we'll resubmit.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm closing the public comment. So.
Do we need a motion? Motion to continue. Item 25 dash 081.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Much appreciated. Okay, discussion items, scheduled field trips. Do we have any? Come back and join us. Do we have any field trips?
Yes, definitely.
Eighty saddleback is scheduled for the.
Hey, guys. Hey, I'm trying to have a meeting here. Can you take it outside? Thank you very much.
We have eighty saddleback.
Okay, so we will do that at 7:30 Tuesday, October 21st?
That's, yes.
Are there any matters from members of the planning commission? Okay. Matters from staff?
Yes, Chair Chelf and members of the commission. It is with sadness that we share with you that our current assistant planner, Stephanie Grant, is going to be leaving the city of Rolling Hills and will be joining the city of Palos Verdes Estates as their planner. We are very proud of Stephanie and all the great things that she's accomplished for the city, but we do wish her best of luck in her future endeavors. And she is only arm disses away, well, for you, it's much longer, mine's shorter, shorter arms, but we wish her the best of luck. And she's been great, so.
We are sorry to hear that. You have been a great addition to the family here. You've done a great job and we really truly appreciate what you've contributed over the years. You will be, you will be missed. We love you too.
So we have her till about the first week of October.
And congratulations on the new position.
Congratulations.
We've been with you guys for all these years.
Will come back and visit us.
Rest assured, it's going to be big shoes to fill, but I am working closely with Will Dan to provide us some continuity at the time of we're transitioning Stephanie out of her role. We will have an assistant planner at the associate level as well to join us. Her name is Jessica, so we'll be integrating her as soon as next week to kind of fill in those gaps. In addition, myself and some staff members are assisting me with the recruitment process for this position, this vacancy, but also the one for the planning manager. Applications continue to come in, so we will be hopefully filling that in the near future.
Thank you. We can never fill your shoes.
Yeah.
Alrighty, we're adjourned.